Welcome to today's work session. The focus of today's work session is to walk through our county code amendment package for this fall. And I believe kicking things off today will be our community development director, Jessica Gwynn.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Board. It's good to be here with you all today to talk about our next round of code amendments for 2022. Jessica Gwynn, Cobb County Community Development Director. And I appreciate the time that I've had with most of you at this point to already walk through the code amendments and answer some of your questions. Today we'll do the presentations and give you an opportunity to ask more questions, hope that we'll have some good discussion from the board and get some good feedback. Just so you know, and just so that everyone here is clear, you know, in the past, we've done this a little bit differently. We've done the work session and the first public hearing on the same day, and then we did the second public hearing two weeks later. So what we did this time was to do, we'll do the work session today to do the presentation. We actually have an extra Tuesday this month, so we have three full weeks between now, the presentation, and the first public hearing. So that gives us three weeks to research any questions you have, any suggestions, see what we might be able to incorporate into the code. Then we'll have the first public hearing on September 13th. At that point, we'll hear public feedback, public comments on the code. And then from there, we'll still have two more weeks before the final public hearing and potential adoption. So the long story short is that gives us a lot of time until these are adopted on September 27th, they're still draft. So there's still things that we can continue to refine and massage based on your feedback as well as the feedback we received from the public. So I'm going to jump right into it. We have several chapters, and before we get started, I would like to just note from the board, we have several chapters. Would it be your preference to do one chapter, then answer any questions, and then move on to the next, or go through the entire presentation and cover everything at once?
Let's start off with the former, or the initial option you gave us to walk through and ask questions, and we'll see how time goes. I know last time it took us quite a while to eventually get through, so I just ask for commissioners to be mindful of time. And if we start having robust discussion around something, then we know that that's opportunity for us to speak offline.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll put it in the parking lot, then. Otherwise, we'll keep it moving. All right, so we're just going to jump right in, and I'm going to tell you, actually, I'm going to skip chapter two for a second and come right back to it and start on chapter 18, because chapter two is sort of secondary to 18. So chapter 18, this is our building regulations chapter. And what we're proposing at this time is a multifamily rental housing inspection program. As you all know, we've had a number of residents who have come to give public comment and who have reached out to each of you individually, expressing concerns about how their apartment units or multifamily units are being maintained, the responsiveness of landlords to maintenance issues within their apartments, and just how those are being handled. So this is a program that's been successful in other locations. I know the city of Smyrna, right here in Cobb County, has a similar program. And in fact, our code very closely mirrors the code that they use in Smyrna. And what this will do is it's going to set forth definitions, requirements, and also penalties for the new multifamily rental housing program. This only applies to multifamily units, dwelling units, so a dwelling, four or more units. So if it's an apartment building with four, five, six units, then it applies. If it's a duplex, it does not apply. And what this is going to require is it's going to put the onus on the property owner or the property management group to do an inspection of a minimum of 25% of their units every single year. That would need to be submitted with their business license renewal application, because they do get a business license every year. So they would turn in documentation every year that a minimum of 25% of those units have been inspected inside for property maintenance issues. It would require annual inspection of 100% of external issues. So all property maintenance issues for the outside windows, those sorts of things, would have to be done annually. The intent here is that by requiring 25% a year, every four years, all 100% of those units and each development should be inspected. This is going to take a little bit of time to ramp up. We're currently getting ready to kick off our 2023 renewal season for business licenses. So this wouldn't be effective until the 2024 renewals, which we'll start collecting next October. So that gives about a year to get that first 25% of those units done. You can't just have anybody inspecting units. You can't just designate somebody, your cousin or your uncle, and say, come out here and take a look at it. We do have requirements in the code that require that it's a certified building inspector. So a certified building inspector is someone who is a licensed design professional, either an architect or an engineer. They would hold one or more ICC certifications, as you can see listed here. If they wanted to become a certified building inspector, and this would be a private entity, a private inspector, not one of our inspectors, they would have to apply to the county to request to be put on the list of approved building inspectors. And then from there, they would utilize a list, a checklist, that we would give them to complete the inspection. So they're inspecting the things that we say must be inspected every year. They would submit that inspection report, staying in compliance with the inspection whenever they come to renew their occupation type certificate or their business license. If there is something that is not compliant, and there will be, you know, from time to time, there may be issues that need to be addressed, they would need to submit a plan to the chief building official to outline the time and the scope of work that would be needed to bring the property into compliance or to bring the unit into compliance. Once the chief building official looks at that, if the timeline is reasonable, if it makes sense, then he could grant an extension for up to one year for them to bring that unit into compliance. But there would be no extension for life safety issues. So anything that could potentially cause, you know, danger to life or limb, that certainly would be something where we would not want to have that unit continue to be leased out. So if there's other things that are not life safety issues, then if it's reasonable, they've got a reasonable plan to address it, then we'll grant an extension there. So that's the overview of the multifamily rental housing inspection program. I think the important thing here is that it'll give us a mechanism to ensure that units are being inspected throughout the county. You know, anytime that someone has a complaint or concern about their unit, if a tenant's concerned, they can always call our office. And you all with the new budget just approved, the full-time housing complaints coordinator, they can always reach out to us. If the tenant makes that outreach and asks us to come in and do an inspection, we can. So if there are problem units, we can address them that way and continue to handle them just as we are now. But this is for all those other units, and perhaps there are tenants who are concerned about, you know, perhaps retribution if they complain on their landlord. So hopefully, this would alleviate some of that. And then just real quick, back to chapter two. All that is, this is the administration chapter, and we're just adding in here to give code enforcement the authority to enforce this new article in chapter 18. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions about chapter 18 before we move on.
Are there any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
When the inspection takes place, is there opportunity for the inspector to attest that everything that's being submitted is factual, or are we just getting communication from the property owner?
The inspector would submit a report that-
Directly.
Right, exactly. There would be a report that would be submitted with his signature and everything on it, certifying that everything had been checked out.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, very good. Well, then we'll move right along. This one's pretty quick. I'm just going to hit it real quick for the fire department, however, if there are any questions on this-
Excuse me, Jessica, we had another question.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
If you can highlight your mic, that way I can see.
Hi, Jessica. I know I had a great meeting with you and Debbie Blair the other day. Were you going to incorporate the International Building Code into this?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the other changes, when can we expect to see those?
Yes.
I know this is a draft, but that way the public can see what the changes are as well.
Right, absolutely. And what we can do is any changes that come as a result of this conversation today, we'll incorporate those into the draft, and then we'll put the updated draft out there for public review prior to the first public hearing. And then I'll give you all a document, and it'll also be publicly available, showing exactly what the changes have been since the first draft, so you'll be able to easily pick those out, like the ones that we discussed the other day. And for the benefit of the board, Commissioner Gamble suggested, and it was a great suggestion, that we identify exactly which codes are going to be referenced in completing these inspections. So we'll be sure to include that in an updated draft.
Commissioner Burl.
So this is just for inspections of existing apartments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what if we wanted to implement on any apartments, like security issues, like we have in the student housing?
Well, and Commissioner Burl, we'll cover that in the chapter 134, your recommendation to incorporate the crime prevention through environmental design that we've incorporated into the purpose-built student housing. We'll cover that a little bit later, some zoning chapter.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else before we move on?
Just some curiosity, Jessica. The new housing official that we funded, are they inspecting just multifamily, or are they also inspecting single-family rental properties?
They'll be available for any housing complaints. So if you have a tenant who resides in a single-family property, and they call and ask us to complete an inspection, we can do that.
Okay.
We wouldn't be able to go in there without cause to do it, but if they call and ask us to, then we would be able to. So it's overall, all housing complaints would be able to be addressed by that new inspector.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
So Jessica, just to clarify, because I know you clarified for this, for me on Friday, this code only applies to properties that have four or more?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you clarify that for everyone else?
Yes, this is, again, this is only for, this code only applies to multifamily properties of four or more units. However, if we do have someone who is concerned about their single-family unit that perhaps they rent, perhaps they're renting a single-family home, and they feel like their complaints are not being heard, and there's code complaints, the tenant could still, just like they could today, they can still reach out to our office and ask us to conduct an inspection. And that's not impacted by this code.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move right along. And this is quick. Chapter 54-54.2, this is one that came forward before you earlier this year. There was a lot of discussion about it. I'm just going to hit the change real quick, and if you have any questions, then, you know, our fire marshal's office is here to cover it. But this pertains to outdoor social gatherings that have a projected crowd that would exceed 1,000 people. They would need to obtain a permit from the fire marshal's office that would require, and not be limited to, that they provide EMS services, a plan for hydration stations, fire watch, crowd management, and also messaging of their fire life safety factors that are, they need to be considered. So really, what's changed here from before is there was a lot of discussion at the board level about how exactly are we going to calculate the crowds? Is it 1,000 people over the course of the day, or is it 1,000 people at any given time? So this clarifies that the crowd calculations are estimated at one time. So if at any point in the day, we expect that there may be more than 1,000 people at the event, at that point, they would need to apply for a permit through the fire marshal's office. And then, of course, the fees related to that would be in accordance with section 54-62. So if there's any questions on that, I'm sure that Nick Dahl would be happy to address those, and otherwise, we will keep it moving. All right, great. Moving right along, chapter 78, short-term rentals. And I've had the opportunity to talk to each of you at some point in the last several months about short-term rentals. And as you know, this is the third time that I've brought the short-term rental ordinance to the Board of Commissioners for consideration. When we brought it the first time in 2020, the direction we got from the board was, let's get some people together, some stakeholders, let's talk about it. We did that. We brought it back earlier this year. I know there were some concerns from residents who were completely opposed to short-term rentals. There were some concerns from residents who were concerned that it was too restrictive what we're proposing, and that it would maybe inhibit their opportunity to have short-term rentals. So I think at this point, what we really need is just some discussion from the board to hear from you all, what your consensus about which way we want to head this. But I'm just going to hit the highlights real quickly. The code that we're putting forward, and that, you know, again, it really hasn't changed significantly, other than just a couple of little language changes since the spring. And it mirrors what a number of other jurisdictions are doing throughout the region. So this is something that's in line with best practices. Whenever we talked to the Short-Term Rental Owners Association of Georgia, they reviewed it and said, you know, this code is feasible. This is something that we can live with as the industry association. Again, it's very much in line with kind of what's working in other places right now. So a short-term rental, just by definition, is a rental that does not exceed 30 consecutive days. If someone wanted to have a short-term rental, they would need to obtain a certificate to operate the short-term rental. That would be obtained through the business license division, and there would need to be a separate certificate for each short-term rental. And then the application on there also needs to include the number and location of parking spaces, because you all know, typically, on the short-term rentals, a lot of the issues that we have are related to parking and noise and what have you. The short-term rental would also have to designate a short-term rental agent. If we have a property owner who's not local, then that's going to be challenging in ensuring that our codes are enforced. So this would be someone who would be local, that would be listed on the application, that would be available to serve as, to handle any issues that might arise. Somebody that we could contact pretty readily if we have any problems, somebody the neighbors could contact if they need to. If there is a violation, and often, that's where we have the problem, you know, the violation is noise, or parking, or litter, or those things that we already have on the books. But by nature, short-term rental, the occupants are maybe out the next day, and we don't have anybody to follow up with. So the short-term rental agent would be somebody who would be able to accept service of any notifications of violation associated with the short-term rental. They would have to acknowledge that they understand the requirements for short-term rental, and if there were to be any changes to that agent, then that would be needed to, we would need notification within five business days. Standard conditions are in line with what we require everywhere else. They're permitted in all residential zoning districts. They would have to have a valid certificate of occupancy, just like any occupant, you know, or home dwelling would require, they would have to have a certificate of occupancy. You can't park an RV out in your backyard and call it a short-term rental. It would need to meet all the requirements that pertain to single-family residences, including our parking requirements. The occupancy, just like in our single-family code, would be limited to one adult per 390 square feet, and they would have to adhere to all building, fire, and health and sanitation regulations, just like any other residence would here in Cobb County. Any advertising for the short-term rental would also have to include the maximum occupancy based on this number right here, one adult per 390 square feet, maximum number of vehicles, and also noise regulations. And then it would also need to be posted in the short-term rental unit, so that way, whoever the occupant is, would have posted notification of, these are the expectations in Cobb County. From the enforcement standpoint, any complaints about short-term rentals would be submitted to code enforcement, and then code enforcement would notify both the agent and the owner. The agent would be responsible for contacting the occupant to address. So if the concern is parking, they would be the one responsible for contacting the occupant if they're still there to get the parking issue resolved. All violations would result in a written notice of violation. Again, that could be served both to the owner and/or the short-term rental agent. And then the police department would also have the authority to enforce this section of the code and issue citations. Often, with short-term rentals, a lot of the issues that we may have may be after hours, and may be after outside of the eight to five. So it's important to ensure that the police department also has the authority to respond to and enforce this section. Penalties, again, nothing's changed since before. First violation in 12 months would be $500. Second violation would be $750 within that 12-month period. And a third violation within a 12-month period would result in their existing certificate being revoked, as well as any pending certificates. And then any new applications for short-term rental at that property within 12 months would be rejected. Short-term rentals would be subject to taxation, just as hotels and motels and other lodging establishments are. They would have to pay the hotel motel taxes, tourism fees, other state and local taxes and fees. And also, the owner would be responsible for collecting that payment and submitting it to the state and county. And just as we discussed before, last year, the General Assembly actually started requiring for short-term rentals that are advertised on the platforms like the VRBOs, Airbnbs, those platforms that are out there, the platforms are now required to collect those taxes, the hotel motel taxes and what have you, and to submit them. So we actually get a check every month from Airbnb for the hotel motel taxes associated with the short-term rentals advertised on their platform. So that's the spiel on short-term rentals. Glad to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Burl.
Jessica, the state tax, that's already being collected, that was-
For the ones that are being advertised on the platform. Now, to what extent, I would expect probably the majority of them are being advertised on a platform. I'm sure there are some that are out there, some one-offs. But any that are advertised on a platform are required by state to collect and submit the hotel motel taxes.
Right, but that's through the state. We're not adding a tax to those, other than their business license and certificate and the fees that they have to pay for that? Or are we?
The hotel motel taxes that are being collected are our hotel motel taxes.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. But it's nothing additional.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
That's a state tax. It's coming to us, but we're not adding additional taxes.
We're not adding anything that we don't apply to any other lodging establishment in Cobb County, correct?
And also, I've had some feedback from citizens, of course. And one thing that has been asked about, and I know, you know, I don't know how everybody on the board feels, but to make it a minimum acreage lot size, because of so many subdivisions, platted subdivisions or homes close together, and if these are rented out, you know, it could become a nuisance in the neighborhood with cars parked everywhere, parties, and noise, and you don't know what you're getting into. So that's something that we'd like to consider. And then also, the fines for the 500, and then in the first 12 months, the first fine 500, 750, and then we can revoke their license if they have three within a 12-month period, and they can't reapply for 12 months, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Some folks think that that's not enough, or the fine isn't high enough. So I'd like to, you know, discuss this with the other commissioners to see what feedback they may have gotten from citizens or people that are impacted by these. And, you know, there's a lot of them out there that are no problem at all, that are, you know, renting them out, and they're on-site, and they take care of any issues, but there are others that are abusing the system as well and impacting neighbors. So I'd just like to have more discussion on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I'm happy to certainly discuss further some of your ideas, but I will say that for the acreage concept, I'm not in support of that at this point. I think it'll actually encourage Airbnbs to exist in more residential areas if you require a larger plot space versus in more commercial areas. And so I think it would give us a result that we wouldn't be wanting, it would give us the opposite. But I think that from an enforcement standpoint, that's what we really need to key in on in order to make sure that there's compliance, and this, as far as I'm concerned, establishes that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And also, since Nick Dahl is here, he had some input on the fire marshal's side, if you want to call on him.
Yes, I don't know if Nick wants to speak to any of that, and I haven't had a chance to review what he's submitted yet in the last couple days. But, you know, we can also certainly take a look at all that, too. I don't know if he wants to speak to it now, but we can certainly take a look at those, and, you know, again, it's still a draft at this point.
Thank you, yes. Why don't we have commissioners ask their questions? And Nick, I see you're queued up, so don't go too far, just-
Well, what I'll say about Airbnb, I am certainly in support of at least exploring an acreage restriction. The concerns from the constituents that I've received in District Four and outside of District Four is the concern for safety, number one. Parking is certainly an issue, and we talk about platted subdivisions. And while we'll have restrictions in the code for short-term rentals, I'm not very confident that people are really necessarily going to abide by them. And by the time we get there, you know, the lease term is over, whether it's for a weekend or whatever the case may be. And, you know, this is getting into the hotel and motel business. And when we have people to lease short-term rentals, they're there on vacation. And when you're on vacation, you vacation, whatever that may be, whether it's parties, et cetera. And there are some landlords that, or owners, that rent exclusively for parties. So there are several concerns regarding short terms, and, you know, I understand that it may provide a solution with respect to passive income for some, but I'm just leery in turning residential areas into resort and hotel and motel areas. So, you know, I'm not sure where we would end up with respect to the acreage requirement, but I'm certainly in support in exploring that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gamble?
Okay, first, if we start restricting these rentals by acreage, we are violating property owner rights. Second of all, if we sit here and restrict it to areas of an acre or more, those are typically people that have located in an area where they don't want neighbors. They don't want a lot of people in their backyards. They want their open spaces, yet this would essentially be infringing on their right to have privacy and such, because while there's only so many people that can spend the night in the house, it does not respect how many people can come during the day. And again, you can't enforce that, because as long as they're parked on the hardened surface, they can have as many cars as they want packed in there. So I do not support restricting it to specific-size parcels.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll follow up with that, and I can respect the desire for them, excuse me, I can respect the desire for these to be limited from some residential communities. I also think short-term rentals are attractive to some because it is in a residential community, and just the safety element, or having a larger space than you necessarily may get at a commercial hotel room. So I think as a board, we'll need to determine if we want to facilitate these in residential areas or not. I think that's a key decision we'll need to make. I have to agree with Commissioners Richardson and Gamble that I'm not in support of restricting this by acreage. I don't think acreage is a sufficient nexus to get to the root of the issue. If the issue is not wanting the use in certain land use areas, then we need to address it from a land use perspective, not a size perspective. And so, you know, we can perhaps consider this to be a permitted right in a commercial area or a certain residential area based off of land use classification. But just limiting somebody by the size of their lot, I believe, is discriminatory in a sense, because you are giving someone who perhaps has the ability to have that larger lot, the ability to have that flexibility. And I believe it will result in equity. There are certainly areas of the county that have larger acreage, which would then be more prone to have this type of use. And if you reflect on what Commissioner Gamble said, that may not necessarily be conducive to that use. So I'm not against trying to see if there's a way to restrict it from certain areas, but I'm absolutely against doing that on the basis of square footage. I don't know what provisions other cities have had, but, you know, the party element is a concern, that some people are renting these as party houses. And I didn't see any specific text to get to that. You know, is there a way that we can restrict it for that purpose?
Yes, and that's not something that's in here right now, but that's something that we can look at incorporating some additional language that may speak specifically to that. You know, this section of the code is open for amendment right now. So, you know, we could certainly look at that and see what additional provisions we may want to bring forth for board consideration.
And I don't know which Commissioner said, you know, people on vacation want a vacation. So, maybe, yeah, if somebody has a short-term rental, but that short-term rental is in a certain zoning classification, like in a commercial area, then party. But if you know you are getting that short-term rental in a residential land use category, then that's not an appropriate activity. So, I would just, you know, ask that we look at this code again from a land use perspective. Also, it's implied from looking at the definitions from the short-term rental occupant in short-term rental property, that the lease term is for a max of 30 days.
Yes ma'am.
Pardon?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, I don't see that in the list of conditions, that it's for a max of 30 days.
And the list of... Right, it's not in that list. It's, you know, a short-term rental by definition is a rental of less than 30 consecutive days.
Okay, just if somebody were to say, what's the criteria of having this outside of the definitions? It may not hurt just to restate that.
Yes, we can certainly look at that. Absolutely.
And then, there's one more thing I have. Yeah, I think all the other concerns I had were addressed by the Commissioners of their comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on...
I'm sorry, Nick, yes. You can share with us what you've been doing around this code. That'd be helpful as well.
He's our hero.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak. I'm not going to add too much to this. I know you guys have been working on the specific proposal a couple of times, but I will say we've had some challenging cases we've been working through. And one of the things I wanted to propose was basically the threshold set forth in the Life Safety Code as needing certificates of occupancy is something that I think the process would need a pointer towards validating. So, if someone's applying for this process, it can get confusing if you're lodging or hotel motel or in-home boarding care. There's all these individual different thresholds. I just think the process needs to point to the current threshold set forth in NFPA 101, which is what we do over at the Fire Marshal's Office anyways.
Okay. You want to explain what that is? You said the threshold in NFPA?
There's about 16 different chapters of occupancies, and each of them have individual thresholds, like how many hours you're there, how many unrelated people. And depending on what the person's doing, it just needs to be evaluated through the codebooks and the safety standards we apply at the Fire Marshal's Office. Traditionally, we don't look at houses. Single-family homes is not something the Fire Marshal's Office reviews. So, if there's a process, I just think it needs to point to the standard we use to validate what's needed. So, we would just need a floor plan and, you know, how many people are going to be in it, that type of a thing. We would just co-work with the Building Department on that process, and that's what I was hoping.
And I think we can address that pretty simply, because, you know, again, these are single-family residences, so nothing changes. They are still single-family residences. They're still limited in the number of occupants they have, just as any single-family residence would be. So, nothing changes from the use standpoint. It's still a single-family residence. But we can work through that, if there's anything we want to take a look at adding.
Thank you. I know that would take man-hours to do that. And the fees that I saw for some other cities and counties are higher than our fee and don't know how we arrived to the fee we have set in this application.
That fee is in line with the application fee for the occupation tax certificate. It's the same fee, because ultimately, it's an administrative function. You know, again, these are single-family houses being occupied and used, just like single-family houses always are, with the same cap on the number of people and everything. So, we don't need to send an inspector out there to inspect a single-family house that's already there. In fact, I'm not sure that we can, because it's already been inspected and the certificate of occupancy has been issued. So, really, it is, it's just an administrative cost of doing business. This is what it costs us to produce the certificate.
Thank you.
Right.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for Nick or Jessica? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Well, I appreciate your discussion on that. And I will just emphasize right now, before we move on, that, you know, currently, short-term rentals are here. We don't have anything in the code to stop them. This gives us a mechanism that currently we don't have to help rein them in. And also, to the point about, you know, there's a parking issue and the occupants have moved on. Well, this gives us the ability to follow up with the owner and the agent and to enforce penalties, you know, bring penalties to them if their occupants, their short-term occupants are not acting in accordance with our code here. So, at that point, it's really incumbent on the short-term rental owner and the agent to ensure that, you know, they're renting to people who are going to come and act right in the neighborhood and be good neighbors. So, I'm hopeful, I really hope that we'll be able to move this forward again, so that we will have a mechanism to, you know, keep better track of our short-term rentals here in Cobb and make sure, again, that they're good neighbors. And then, as we know, we do code amendments every year, at least once a year. So, if there's something we find that's not working quite like we had intended for it to, we can always bring it back. All right. We'll keep moving. The next one, another hopefully quick and easy one. This is the weed control ordinance. And this was a recommendation, a suggestion, I believe, that came out of the Mableton Improvement Coalition and was co-sponsored by Commissioner Sheffield and Commissioner Burl. To look at currently, the properties that are over 40,000 square feet, so basically an acre, are exempt from the weed ordinance. Well, if you have a home that's sitting on an acre and the house is within 75 feet of the right-of-way, right now, they could just let their grass and their weeds grow up over 12 inches and look bad. So, this, I think, was a great recommendation, that the exemption now from the weed control ordinance would be for properties under single ownership of 40,000 square feet, unless they're building or structures within 75 feet of the public right-of-way. In that case, it would, just like with any other smaller lot, be unlawful for... Let's try this, unlawful for weeds to exceed 12 inches in height between the building and structure or the right-of-way. So, that'll help us with code enforcement, to be sure that those larger lots that do have a structure would be maintained well. Any questions on that one? All right.
I just have to bring this one example up. I had a constituent at one time had a homeowner that would just cut the front and let the backyard just grow to be about six foot tall. And the weed ordinance that we have, does it cover the entire lot or is it just from the front of the house?
I believe, and I would want to go back and just confirm, but if it's under an acre, I believe it applies to the property.
Okay.
But I'll confirm with code enforcement. I'll double-check. I'm positive.
Call Kathy.
Yes. Because the resident claimed they had all kinds of vermin coming into her property, so, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Jessica, so how is this, because I know we have a property on Barrett Parkway that is a hayfield, that has a structure within 75 feet of the right-of-way. How is this going to impact them?
If it's within 75 feet of the right-of-way, then the way the code is written between the structure and the right-of-way would need to be maintained. So, we can, let us take a look at that and see if there's something that we want to tweak there to see if there's another exception that's appropriate, perhaps on more agricultural properties or what have you. That's a great, great question.
Okay, because, well, and we have to be careful, because it's not zoned agricultural. It's zoned R-30, which allows agricultural. So, that's where it kind of gets conflicting for code enforcement, because it's technically R-30, which is residential, but it's being used as an agricultural use.
That's interesting.
Even though it hasn't been rezoned for an agricultural use, but agricultural is allowed to be done. So, that would be a concern that I'd like to see addressed, please.
That's a great question, Commissioner. I appreciate you bringing that up. We'll be glad to take a look at that and see how we might be able to take account for that in the code as appropriate.
Yes, Commissioner.
And maybe there's an opening, that since it's a designated use, not necessarily the land use, but it's called out that agricultural uses are permitted on R-30, then potentially it can be a use category?
Right, but what we have to be careful of is we have, say, one-acre lots that is not agricultural to produce hay, in this example. So, we got to be careful that, you know, someone doesn't say, "Well, I'm growing hay," when they're technically not.
That makes sense, okay.
Should be a hay permit.
I do not support more governmental fees, okay?
Should be with the horses, hay is for horses.
I think we're ready to move on. Is that what I'm hearing?
What time is it? We know we're going to be here.
Okay, well, you know, really, we're making great progress. I appreciate that. I think we might come to a grinding halt soon, but we're going to keep going. So, this one, again, this one's simple. This is the parks ordinance. This is one that Michael Brantley brought forth earlier this year with regard to smoking on county-owned properties and parks, stating that smoking or vaping will be prohibited within any park, sports complex, recreation area or facility owned, leased or operated by Cobb County, including any open area within such park, sports complex, recreation area or facility. And then designated smoking areas may be approved at the sole discretion of the Parks Director. So, previously, when this came before golf courses were included, there was a lot of talk about golf courses. If anyone has any questions or concerns about this language as it's put forward, to hopefully address some of the concerns of earlier this year, Michael Brantley, of course, is here, and I'm glad to answer those, but if not, then we are prepared to keep moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, well, hearing none, I'm going to turn the show over to Jonathan Jenkins to talk about Chapter 102, Solid Waste.
The man with the broadest shoulders in Cobb County.
Yeah, really. Get ready, Jonathan. We're coming at you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Actually, I added this first slide just so I can put everything in context and bring us back up to speed over the last, I guess, two years that got us to this point. As a reminder, in Cobb County, garbage hauling, or garbage and recycling collection, I should say, and unincorporated Cobb, functions as a free market, open enterprise, in which garbage service providers offer services to the portions of the county that they choose to operate in. And at the same time, residents or homeowners, you know, have the option of selecting which garbage haulers they want to choose or that they want to service, you know, their areas. This worked very well throughout the county in the past, when there were 60 or more garbage haulers, as it was when I first started with the county in 1999. Starting around the recession, actually around 2012, once we dipped below 30 haulers, that's when we started noticing that we had performance-related issues. Because when we had the higher number of haulers, it was more self-regulated. If we had a poorer-functioning hauler, they were easily, you know, switched out with a better-performing hauler. Now, we're down to, the last two years, we've been in between 18 and 20 haulers is how many we have in permitted to pick up in unincorporated Cobb at this time. The categories of the issues or the residents that have brought issues to the county, told us about their problems, fall into like four or five major categories. First, we have residents that have no haulers that want to service their street or cul-de-sac. Either the street is dead-end street and they can't get down, or it's a cul-de-sac in which people park, you know, out on the street and it's congested and they cannot get down to service. So, sometimes they will choose not to service those streets. Residents that have only one choice for a hauler that they are not satisfied with. In both of those cases, they reach out to the county and we have nothing that we can offer, I guess, you know, as a resolution for them. Residents that do not want different garbage haulers coming down their streets or coming into their neighborhoods, you know, multiple days during the week. Now, I've talked, actually, I've spoken to HOAs about that. And I told them that they have control over that, if they choose to. The HOA can get together and they can either decide that they only want one or two garbage haulers. But in most of the cases, they all, the people have came back and said that they think that's something that the county should regulate, which surprised me. Also, we have residents that have missed garbage or recycling pickups for consecutive weeks. Here again, there's nothing that Cobb County government can do about that. With that being said, I believe, leaving out one category, there's also a percentage, I guess, of illegal dumping that can be attributed to the fact that there is no mandatory garbage collection requirement for Cobb County. So, residents can choose to have garbage service and recycling or choose not to. Now, some people that choose not to, they utilize the Cobb County's transfer station on County Services Parkway. But then, that also increases the lines that we see at the transfer station. So, with that being said, I believe the options that was discussed with the BLC at the April 2021 work session, and I believe that I also spoke to four of the five Commissioners earlier this year, I think one was recusing, was I presented the three options or discussed the three items that I was told to look into. And those were basically do nothing, leave the ordinance the way it is and see if, I guess, it would auto-correct or self-correct as it has done in the past. But with the number of complaints still being very high, especially in a couple of Commission districts, we were told that that was probably not going to be feasible and for me to look at other options. I also talked about establishing some form of non-exclusive franchise system, which would include a residential service agreement and try to have that service agreement account for the people that were having issues, especially the people that did not have service or no access to a quality service provider. And then, the third option was for some form of franchised garbage collection system, you know, in the county, where one hauler or a joint venture of haulers, you know, could come together to provide service in service collection districts. I believe the number four or four service districts that we'll see earlier that came up in discussions, I believe, with Clayton County, because Clayton County is also evaluating doing some form of franchise system where they only do it based off of the Commission districts. You know, at this point, you know, staff is not recommending, you know, anything as far as, you know, a particular franchise system to go with. But what we did put together in this ordinance draft is a framework that can be modified. More service zones could be added. We could talk about more or multiple haulers being able to pick up in service districts that are decided upon or anything else that, you know, that the board desires. So, I didn't know, are there any questions before I move on, you know, from this slide?
Certainly, considering there's been robust discussion around this, I'm just going to go down the dais and see if anyone has any questions or comments. And I'll start with Commissioner Gambrell.
First of all, my comment is, is you have not met with me. The last time I had any information on what you could potentially propose was sent to me on January 14th of 2019. You did not have any meetings with me this year on these code amendments that have been proposed.
Commissioner Gambrell, sorry.
Excuse me, Commissioner, let's give him a chance to respond.
I don't have the actual date, but we had a virtual meeting earlier this year, I believe with myself and Kimberly White. I think at that meeting, you know, you discussed that you thought that government should not be, you know, interfering with, I guess, garbage haulers and garbage collection in the county. And you pointed out several examples, you know, such that, you know, to support, I guess, your side.
On top of that, I find it also interesting that the Keep Cobb Beautiful Board did not even know that this language was going to be coming out, nor did they have an opportunity to review it. Yet, in your proposal, you've got a 21-member board that you're proposing. So, again, I was a little shocked that even the KCB Board, while they might be focused more on recycling, wasn't up to date on this either. As far as the haulers not being able to access houses because of the streets, have we looked at what the minimum... to access houses because of the streets, have we looked at what the minimum width of a street needs to be in order to allow these trash haulers to get to these homes? Because there's a lot of times that in these rezonings we do, we are approving smaller streets with less driveways that then force people to park on site.
Excuse me, Commissioner. I just, I would like for you to continue your questions, but I would like for us not to have this adversarial communication with our staff presenting amendments and/or accusatory. I just, they're doing a work based off of complaints that we have been providing them as Commissioners. Certainly, I know that our director can speak with you if there has been any offense caused through communication, but I would just ask for us talking about the substance of these, that we keep our comments to the substance of these so that we can encourage the collaboration that we have with our staff when it comes to drafting our code.
And again, has there been consideration to posting no parking, stopping, or standing signs on roads that haulers can't access because this is a problem? Second of all, for the record, the only time that I had complaints of missed trash pickup was in April of 2020, which is when the pandemic was. So my question would be, is how many complaints have happened since the pandemic? Because again, we know what was happening in the pandemic that was causing hauling to be missed because of consolidation, people being scared to death by the government to go outside of their homes, et cetera, et cetera. But since then, I have not had any complaints in my district as to missed trash pickup. So I would be interested to know how many complaints we've had this year compared to 2020.
Okay, I can provide that information. I would like clarification on the 21 board members that you mentioned earlier. That's how many board members are currently, the ordinance currently allows for, for Keep Cobb Beautiful. So I was a little confused.
It's in your code. I can find the exact section for you.
But there's no change being proposed, I thought, for the number?
My point was, is that if you're going to be having a board, I was surprised that the existing board didn't have any review or input into this prior to it being submitted to the board.
Okay. That may be a point of preference. I know Commissioner Gamble had a number of issues that she shared. I don't know if you are going to address those one by one. I've listed them one by one, and perhaps I should have stopped in between each matter so you could address it, but just would ask if you can help in addressing the issues that she shared.
Yes, I believe I have note-takers.
Okay.
You know, helping me today.
Very good.
What other questions?
Yes, I'm walking through it now. Just, is there possibility to add no-stopping or standing signs with respect to this code?
To get with code enforcement, you know, for that. I know in some subdivisions, they strongly, you know, control, I guess, their signage, you know, within the subdivision. So I don't know how that, you know, you know, works with, you know, what we are allowed to.
Okay, yes. We sometimes utilize DOT and go through a process with them that is actually a part of our Board of Commissioners' agenda. We will vote on having signs erected for no parking. And then, there was a question about how many complaints have been received since the pandemic? Yes, if you could talk about the number or volume of complaints you've been receiving regarding trash pickups?
Volume has, I mean, it really hasn't slowed down that much for my office, maybe for District One, but in conversation with Ross in Communications, he still has a high volume of complaints coming in. We still receive a lot of complaints for both Districts Two and District Three.
Okay.
And I would say District One probably receives the fewest, you know, if any, and then District Four.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
I can certainly appreciate the complexity of this issue and, of course, being mindful of just the dynamics of this industry and smaller haulers versus larger ones. And of course, there have been a lot of questions around accommodating smaller haulers, right? The more entrepreneurial type, and I know this is part of discussion we had as well when we spoke, but what, how does this proposal contemplate that category? Is my first question.
Okay. And as I mentioned earlier, even though we mentioned four surface zones, there's nothing that prohibits, I guess, in this current framework, any type of joint venture or, I used the word, get in trouble with legal collaborative or consortium, you know, that can be formed. We can add specific language to, you know, the ordinance that, you know, allows for those, you know, those types of combinations, I guess, of haulers that they want to, you know, get together and bid on a service zone. And also, as I mentioned earlier, the number four was just, you know, what was, you know, we put in the draft, but, you know, we can look at that being, going from four to eight or to whatever, you know, number of service zones, I guess, that the Commissioners, you know, would feel comfortable with. And then we can specify in those zones, you know, I guess, if we want those zones to be earmarked, I guess, for small haulers or, you know, however that, you know, however that can be.
Yeah, I think, I think it's more of the exclusiveness of it, right? I know we talked about having multiple haulers that could be available for every resident and really just making, the big thing that we wanted to do was identify a stick.
Okay.
For the county, right? Because as it stands today, as you referenced in your opening, there's nothing we can do. And yes, I do still have a bunch of calls coming in. I do still have a bunch of people asking, you know, what's the county going to do? And my response at this point is, well, it's a free market. You can, as it stands today, fire your, the product that you've chosen and hire someone else to do that service. But that being mindful, because I've also received emails that people say, well, I just want my stuff picked up. And this definitely goes with recycling. I mean, there are a lot of, I mean, that doesn't get picked up maybe once a month, maybe. But that, knowing that that's the case, what I'm trying to understand is, is how flexible are we creating, if there are districts or some, some large number of districts, or even if Cobb County is looked at as a single district, are we, are, does this preclude us from having multiple approved haulers to service Cobb County in general?
Definitely at this point, I would say there's nothing that precludes that from happening. If that is the will of the Board, you know, just need to have some guidance, I guess, on how many service districts or zones, I guess, the Board, like, you know, is comfortable with or would like to see, and any other provisions, I guess, that the Board would like to, you know, have added to account for the small haulers.
Okay. I think that's my, my primary question, of course, where most of my focus was.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Braw, go to you. And just a reminder, if we have multiple questions for him, just to give him opportunity to respond to each one, so they're not shared in, as a whole, and he may not have opportunity to respond to each of you.
Hey, Jonathan.
Commissioner.
Having worked in the industry for 26 years, I could be your best adversary or expert on this matter, or I could be your worst nightmare. And there has been issues raised in, through the public that I'd like to clarify before we go any further.
Okay.
I have not been employed by Waste Management since 2010, and as a consultant since 2012. So I've been out of the business for 10, 12 years. If, if this were to go to bid, as I have in the past, and Waste Management is a bidder or it's in this industry, I would recuse myself. However, on a decision like this for code amendments and ordinances, I'm available and, and working with staff and my fellow Commissioners on what's the right thing to do. So there's also a coalition of the small haulers in Cobb. Like you mentioned when you came to work here, and I was working for Waste Management 20 years ago, there were over 60 haulers, and they had a coalition. And they were very protective of their business, rightfully so. And they still exist today. They're not 60 in number, but, you know, when we were getting all the complaints on primarily one hauler, pre-pandemic and during the pandemic, we, we were told by a lot of these citizens that, you know, you have a choice. You can call so-and-so and so-and-so. And we were told on multiple occasions that they wouldn't service in our area. So they felt like they had no choice but the ones we were getting complaints on. But since your proposal came out and the code amendments, all these emails we're getting are, we're happy with X company. We don't want to change. We're happy with Y company. We don't want to change. And it is their right to choose who they want to provide their service and contract directly with them. So I'm in favor of open market and people being able to choose who they want to, to pick up their garbage and recycling. And if they're not happy, they go to another person. But restricting it to one hauler per district, to me, is, is not the solution to the problem we're having with missed pickups and service situations, because you're limiting it to the one hauler in each of the four districts. So I think this needs to be tabled and looked at some more. There are other municipalities that do, it's called an infrastructure environmental program fee. And, you know, with something like that, you wouldn't exclude the small haulers. Everybody would pay a certain percentage. They would be audited, and they would give reports to the county. And even with that revenue, we could hire an employee on your staff to, to do the complaint, handle the complaints, and find the ones who aren't performing or, and not penalize the ones that are. But it's just something to think about. There are other options that we can look at, but I don't support one hauler per, for each four districts.
Understood, Commissioner.
But thank you for all your heart.
Okay.
Hello, Dr. Jenkins.
Commissioner.
Are you planning to present the amendment? Because I know there's a lot of discussion around it, but I was just wondering if it was, if you're going to present the actual changes after this slide?
Yes, we do have additional slides there where we summarize some of the changes. Do you have any specific questions?
Well, I was going to give you the opportunity to present first for the benefit of people that are both watching and for those that may not be familiar with what the changes are. So I'll just hold off on my comments until then. But regarding the hauling on the cul-de-sac street, I know there was a recommendation to add street signs, and this may be a question for DOT that I can connect with later. But if the cars are not illegally parked on the street, I'm not sure that we can implement or erect any no-parking signs. I'm not sure, but that's an item that we can also address as we explore that, explore that as an option. Also, with Keep Cobb Beautiful, just for protocol, is it typical that Keep Cobb Beautiful would be a part of these conversations where you need to kind of bounce things on them? I'm just not sure how they would fit in with respect to changing the codes at all.
Well, I believe the way it's written, it says that the Keep Cobb Beautiful Incorporated nonprofit, I guess, was formed to assist, you know, the Board of Commissioners in recommendations for beautification projects, litter abatement, and I would say waste and reduction programs, environmental education programs also.
Right, but as it relates to your involvement in, in the amendments and revising the amendments, what's Keep Cobb Beautiful's role in all of that?
And the two other amendments that I remember being part of since 1999, the nonprofit was not involved or communicated directly with staff concerning those amendments.
Okay. And your second point, as it relates to this slide, you mentioned that there are some that are not satisfied with their current hauler, but that's the only option that they have there. And I guess throughout your presentation, if, when you get to the relative point here, if you can just, you know, provide some type of recommendation, is if, if we move forward and the county somehow attempts to meet the needs of those particular people, what can we explore there? What can we explore there? And you and I have connected several times regarding an issue with one particular company, which I will not name, and I had a recommendation to revoke that person or that company's license. We didn't quite flesh that out, but I certainly don't feel and won't support, you know, penalizing a group, you know, for, for one bad actor. So, you know, as we move through this, we'll just have some recommendations on, on how to address that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. I have a follow-up question, because Commissioner Sheffield mentioned Keep Cobb Beautiful and their role in this. But did you consult with any of the haulers when you constructed this code? Because there was also a feeling out there that no matter what direction the county was going to do, you were going to use the haulers kind of as a community task force type to have input into this. So were any of the haulers included in the creation of this code?
Haulers, we have not met with the haulers, I believe, since the fall of 2019. Spoken to individual haulers, but not about the content of the draft amendment.
This has been a matter that has been before the Board, going on several years now. As you shared, there has been an observable decline in performance that you've seen since the recession dating back to 2011, 2012. And I know since I've been serving on this Board, we've had multiple work sessions to address issues that have been growing with respect to waste service here in the county. And it makes me apprehensive to want to continue to delay a solution, because we've been telling people year after year that we're working on a solution. And I think, you know, a comment shared by Director Gwen before is that if we do put forward a policy and there is opportunity for improvement, we are not precluded from coming back and making improvements. But I think, considering the conversation that we've had here today and your response, that there is opportunity to massage the code that's before us. I think that there's consensus from all the Board members to have more than one hauler, to consider multiple haulers. And you proposed having multiple districts and determining how we have haulers provide service through a district. I certainly am open to having multiple haulers. I don't think, as Commissioner Sheffield shared, that this code was put forward or our objective is to penalize the, you know, entire industry is to get to the issues that have been brewing for several years that either have been communicated to Commissioners or to Communications, to your office, to the County Manager's Office, to the Public Services Director's Office. Just wanted to go back to some of the policy interests that we have here as a Board, that you stated, or at least what you stated was the purpose of this code. One of them was to address the service issues, and that's why we have a code, because we've had ongoing service issues. I think the number of haulers was limited because there have been issues that communities have had with haulers coming with haulers coming multiple days, sometimes every day of the week. And I know I've had a resident complain at another meeting about seeing trash cans on their cul-de-sac every day of the week because a hauler's coming to pick up waste every day of the week. And just how that isn't the coming of their community. And there's no way that I think we, well, I won't say there's no way. I think we can begin to address that if we have some tighter policy. It doesn't necessarily need to be limiting to one hauler. But I think Commissioner Burrell shares something about like a registry of haulers. I think if there's some way that we can identify who they are, that would help. So at least we have a name, contact. And, you know, if they're paying for a permit, then that allows us to have resources for that follow-up when there are complaints and to address any other customer service needs with our staff. And now you stated that the HOA can determine the number of days that a hauler comes in. And I think that's a communication we can have. So HOAs do know that. But certainly, we have a lot of communities in Cobb that don't have a HOA or don't have a well-functioning HOA. There was a suggestion that was shared as this proposed code was being considered by staff was to be able to have some type of service either provided by the county or designated hauler that if someone has missed service, we can, what's the word? Send out, dispatch, dispatch a hauler to go pick up trash at that particular home. I would love to see that service provided. And I don't see how we get, I don't have all these solutions. That's what you're here for. I can just tell you, I would love for there to be someone in the wings to help us so that there's no resident that's having a week or two weeks that they're not getting service.
Such as a, having a hauler own retainer, I guess, to...
See? Yes, that. I do agree, I do perceive that we do have issues in the county because waste service is not required in the county. And there are some persons who are disposing of waste in ways that they should not. Whether, some may use, well, certainly you shared, some can use county services. But, you know, we've received multiple complaints about the traffic on county services to dispose of waste. And you can see the wear and tear of that site. But I think we do need to get to those homes. I don't know if homes are going to register. I don't think it's just the haulers registering. But I'm seeking your help to know, short of having one hauler for the whole county, how do we know that every active household has service?
We do not at this time.
Yeah. And, you know, I can think of there are residents that live in close proximity to, to the site. You know, maybe for those that live a certain distance, then they may get a waiver because they could probably just drive down the street. Or perhaps maybe there's a, something that they attest to if they live further that they're going to bring their waste. But we've got to, I think, get to a solution where we're making sure each household is properly managing the waste that they have. I would love to see, well, I won't say love. It'd be interesting if there was a correlation between us ensuring that and the amount of waste on the side of the road or litter, you know, diminishing. I've also seen on multiple occasions, countless occasions, of people driving up to commercial waste dumps and disposing of their waste there. And there's typically signs on those containers that say that's not permitted. But I see this, I've seen it so many times in so many commercial areas. I think it will cut down on that as well. I support us trying to figure out how we can address the parking issue as Commissioner Garmble shared, the cul-de-sacs. If we have residents that aren't getting service because of that, then, you know, us working with DOT to put up those signs. In fact, there are some cities that just say, "No, no on-road parking on this day or on this day at that time." So as opposed to restricting parking, you know, if there's some coordination with you and the registered haulers, we can have better insight on that and the signs can be appropriate. So we're not unfairly restricting people having the ability to park on, on the road. One moment, I'm going to go through my notes. While I'm looking at my notes, Commissioner Burrell has more questions.
Do the haulers still have what used to be called pup trucks that could go in these tight areas like alleys and pick up bags of garbage? I mean, that may be something that one particular hauler would be the backup for these missed or smaller areas. I don't know. Also, this, I know this is just residential, but we have had some of the junk haulers come to us as well. And there are several of those that pick up at homes. So would they be restricted with this proposal? Because you don't want to exclude them either for people who, you know, are cleaning out their garage or their attic or whatever and contract with the, these small guys. Because the, not all the residential companies provide commercial too. So you don't...
I was just going to say, Commissioner, that was actually a minor consideration that was taken into account in this framework. Because there, you know, was a large number of residents that wanted bulk item pickup added to their regular garbage service.
Right.
So that was added into what the requirements were going to be for the service providers that have residential service agreements.
So that they're not excluded.
Correct.
Okay.
So, you know, at the current...
That was a question that came up. I just want to make sure of that.
Okay. Did he answer? Did he not answer? Okay. Commissioner Richardson, if you can.
There was a first question that you asked about, do they still have the other types of vehicles? I was interested in hearing the answer for.
You called them the pup or the scout trucks.
Yeah.
I believe only one garbage service provider actually provides those. And typically, that was driven also by the HOAs. Because some HOAs did not want the larger garbage trucks coming through their neighborhoods. So the garbage service provider would provide a smaller truck to go into the community to pick up the waste. But then the issue was where would they transfer the material from the smaller truck into the larger truck?
Right.
And so we're using our parks. And that became an issue a few years ago because they were, you know, stuff was being left, I guess, where they were doing that transition.
And a few years ago, also, there was one company that purchased the routes for two or three other major haulers that, and they, are they still doing that? I mean, and would we be interfering with contracts that they have among, you know, there's a lot of legal issues too that, I don't know. So is that a yes, it would be interfering or no?
No, I'm agreeing with you. There's a lot of legal questions, yes.
Do you have any more to add to that, Bill? No, not at this time?
Well, right now, as Jonathan said, it's a proposal. There's, there's a lot of different options. Right now, there is, while the board has the option to be able to maybe change it and look at it, right now, as is proposed, there only would be four haulers. That's it for Cobb County, each one for each district. There doesn't allow, any, allow any wiggle room within the code as it's presented right now besides just for those four haulers. I don't know if there's four haulers in, in Cobb County. And probably Jonathan's done this research, that would actually be able to take on the magnitude of, of those sorts of, that, that kind of a lift, you know, for Cobb County to be able to do an entire district or not? And what it would take for them to gear up, you know, as far as manpower-wise and as far as equipment-wise. But those are more policy issues, you know, related to how that would ultimately work. But you have, there's, there's a lot of private contractual obligations that would be tied to this as well. I'm sure Burrell's correct.
Yes, Commissioner.
And just to add on to what Bill mentioned, you know, in the proposed code, you know, we give a hauler a 30-day notice if they don't, you know, get in line and pick up the trash, then we can stop the service with them. Yet you can't just switch to another hauler. The county has to go out. They have to do an RFP. They have to solicit. And so what are you going to do from that time that you stop that company from being able to provide service to you're able to find the next one to fill in that gap? You're going to have your small business haulers out of, out of business by then. And the expectation to allow another hauler to just come in and take over is just going to result like it was in April of 2020 when we had mergers going on. In addition to that, going back and again, reading what you gave me in January of 2019, in here, there's transfer station, transfer station. I've gone through and I've highlighted on each page where it says transfer station. And the problem at that time was the transfer station and the waiting times. How does this code address those issues that were documented as of back in 2009?
In 2019?
No. The, this list that you gave me, again, continually says transfer station and wait times as being the major issues with our trash service providers. It's because the haulers can't get in. They can't dump their trucks. They can't get back out to continue to pick up trash. So on this list that goes back to 2009, again, I've gone through every single page and highlighted where, again, drop spots, transfer station, wait times is all throughout this document over the years, going back to 2009. How does this code address these problems?
The framework that's here would, if all residents, all houses have mandatory garbage and recycling service, then those people that are currently in line, they wouldn't be there.
But your haulers are still having to wait in line.
The haulers, then it would be the haulers that would be waiting. They would be in line with each other as opposed to now they're in line with both mom and pops, residential homeowners.
But again, there's also language in this code that says you don't have to use it. You can still do it on your own, even though you would still get the 18% fee. So you're not going to really change that, are you? And it still doesn't change the, the problem with people being able to get in and out of the transfer station. So when are we going to start addressing the transfer station?
Commissioner, can you direct us to where the 18% fee is in the code? Can you just follow along with it?
I have questions on that. And I don't see, I don't know where that came from. Residential service fee? Page 27. It doesn't say 18%.
It is first mentioned under the definitions, which is found on page eight of 39. It says, "A residential service fee shall mean the fee assessed on each residential service unit for collection, transportation, processing, and/or disposal of residential municipal solid waste."
Okay. Is the term 18% listed in this?
I will find that part in the code.
Okay. Because we've also heard questions about it. And we're just trying to identify how that came to be a reference point. Yes, Commissioner Richardson.
And I think part of the question around, well, to reference earlier when I said we were looking for a stick, right? Which goes towards if, if someone can't provide the service or if a permit has to be pulled. One of the things that was up for consideration, which as we continue to discuss this as a board, was to have some type of backup, and Chairwoman also referenced it, but to have some type of backup, either using equipment that we already have and vehicle, equipment that we already have, an inventory or additional. But to be able to fill the gap in while there's either an RFP going out or we are pulling a permit and trying to force a negotiation to happen. But that was just, I, I didn't know if that was still something up for consideration or still on the table.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. While Commissioner Garmble's looking for that, just another suggestion, it was alluded to in Commissioner Garmble's initial comments. You know, we have time between today and our first hearing with respect to this. And we will make a decision. And I think it's likely some other commissioners would be as interested as I am in this. But I would be willing to have a public meeting with you and our, and those that are, are haulers in the county so that we can talk through this. Some of them may be providing services even in other jurisdictions. It may have some other suggestions that we can consider as we're crafting this code. I know you certainly have a lot of experience and you've provided, I think, some great feedback to address our concerns. And we can round that out by hearing from those who are haulers as we come up with possible changes to the code.
And also, Chairwoman, as a follow-up to Commissioner Garmble's question earlier, when I said that we have not met with the haulers in my office since 2019. Now, at that meeting, haulers said that they were, they were going to meet with commissioners. To the best of my knowledge, the only haulers that met with commissioners might have been, I can't remember if Custom met with Commissioner Burrell or not. But that's the only, but they did not necessarily communicate, you know, with my office, you know, who they were meeting with.
When Rob Hosack was here as county manager back then, we met with several of the haulers.
Correct.
Yeah. I didn't meet with any haulers at that time. But I think there's opportunity with this board, since this code is before us, to perhaps arrange a, a meeting with those that...
I can tell you they don't want this.
Yes, but... I know from a brief conversation I had with one on my way in here that there wasn't dialogue desired. And I think we can have that in, in a conversation where we are working together to solve the issue of how we're handling waste in the county. And we can all be part of that solution.
Sounds good.
Madam Chair, I would like to suggest that we pull this proposal and give us time to meet with the haulers and the public and put this on our code amendment package for January, February.
I'm not opposed to that yet. But give us, we have opportunity, as we said, between now and the next hearing are three weeks. I think that's ample time for us to be able to call a meeting or two to discuss this. And then if, you know, by the time we're having these discussions and things don't seem to be moving forward, then I think we cross that bridge when we get to it. But, you know, we've already had this out for public consumption. Again, we've been addressing this for years now. I would hate to just see us continue to pull it because immediately we're thinking of other options. I would just ask for us to at least work towards what we can during this code amendment package. And again, I know I'm personally willing to work with you to hold some meetings with respect to this so that we can have some constructive conversation about how we can address issues that I know I personally have been responding to complaints and telling them we are addressing it in this code package of which has been met with positive response. So I, I am seeking that opportunity because residents have been dealing with this for far too long and expecting us to do something. And this is our opportunity to do our best to do something. Commissioner Garmble, I'm sorry.
So again, we're expecting government to step in and do something that is outside the scope of what government has been put forth to do. As far as meeting with trash haulers, I had a meeting last Wednesday with three smaller private company trash haulers. And the reason why they reached out to me was because code amendments had been released. As far as the process of putting forth new code and how it's written, I was only involved from the community development standpoint when we wrote the residential senior living code. We updated the open space community code when it was the CS code. It was a group of stakeholders that met and created the code together before it ever came to the commissioners. So while I appreciate the fact that we want to do meetings over the next three weeks, again, why weren't the meetings done with the haulers, with even the, the small ones and the large ones like we have done with other code amendments? Instead of just, this is what we're going to do and then everybody scramble from there? If, if we're going to sit here and poke at some other things...
Commissioner, can you answer that question, please? And I can answer that. I would like to answer that question. We have made multiple amendments without having meetings with service providers. We have made multiple amendments without having meetings with service providers. We had amendments with respect to massage parlors. We did not hold meetings with masseuses to have that code changed, but yet this board made that change. We have changed our alcohol code many times. We have not had people that serve alcohol in this county come in and meet this code to address the amendments that we are making to protect public welfare. Is it a courtesy? Is it sometimes even constructive to do that? Yes. But as opposed to us pointing the finger and, and trying to imply that that's something we always do, I think it's, could be helpful if we look at that as an opportunity. And if we are seeing that that's an issue, let's create that as a positive opportunity for us to work together. We can't go backwards, let's move forward. And if we want to have a policy whenever we do something that touches an industry, then we should make sure that we are doing that for every code change that touches an industry or else we are going to be, to me, I perceive unfairly pointing the finger at staff for doing something that has not been a universal practice. And again, I can even say our animal, we were updating our animal code. We didn't call every person that touches that industry for a meeting. I mean, we, I think as a board, we have discretion as a board and as leaders. And if this is an opportunity missed, it's an opportunity that we can get right. But I, again, I just don't think it's fair for the amount of years I've been serving in this posi, excuse me, serving on this dais for us to be pointing the finger about staff not doing something that we have not made regular practice.
But if I can respond to that, the codes that you mentioned were already codes that were on the books. This has not been on the books. This is completely new. And again, the new codes, when we've done them in zoning, have gone through an extensive community input process to help write those codes.
The code, anything that's in this code that's not underscored and double underlined means that it is not being, that it's not being changed. And this is not entirely new or else everything here would be completely underlined. I think there was times past, did the county provide service in this arena?
The county has always operated as is. So the county has, it's always been a free market, open enterprise.
Okay. So I think even if that is the policy, whenever there's new code, and I can assure you, I can assure you, we've had new codes that touch industries where we have not had a meeting. But even if there's opportunity to know that we're going to have an impact to an industry if we change a code, I don't think that it is, that it would not be constructive to have a meeting, but I also don't think that every policy interest requires a meeting when the exigence of putting forward policy is very clear to the board. And perhaps it was less clear about how this moves forward today. But again, all this back and forth, pointing the finger, it's not productive. We cannot go back to the past. It has not been exhibited regularly in the past, and there's opportunity to correct it moving forward.
And so then one other consideration, since this will result in an ad valorem tax, then it needs to be put on a referendum and let the voters vote.
I think we can confer with our county attorney about if that's required.
We'd have to take a look at it. My understanding that, I don't know if you've spoken with Carl Jackson regarding this or report?
No.
So I mean, it would be something that'd be added on there. We'd have to take a look at that and see how that would be, how that would work.
I think that's a fair consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is something that I think Deborah had, you know, brought to my attention.
I just want to emphasize, the reason why we have these meetings is because there is opportunity to work through a code that's being proposed. I don't think staff is proposing anything that is made concrete. In fact, they are soliciting our feedback. They are soliciting and asking us. Yes, there is opportunity to do that before the code comes before the board, but there is opportunity through these work sessions and every hearing when we hear from the public and get emails, to be able to work through iterations of a proposal. This is not helpful for us to be pointing at the finger on something that we know is a draft, that we are asking for cooperation and input. And I would just ask that we look at any code proposal in that spirit of how we can work together to provide the best code possible to serve the interests of our citizens and of our organization. Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for, for taking out questions and making yourself available throughout this process. But, you know, just a couple of things as we move forward with the solution. I think that there's a, an agreement from the board that, at least my position is, we don't feel that a one hauler per district would work. Now, I, I don't know all the details of it, if there would be subcontractors, what type of agreement or arrangement that would make, but I, I think you're pretty clear, you're pretty clear on that. Now, with respect to the government stepping in and getting into the trash business, which has also been some of the emails that I received, or that we have all received, when the government steps in to do anything is, well, let me take that back. When this board steps in and get involved in, in areas that are not typically seen as a government area, it's in direct response to concerns from the constituents. There's been a great deal of response during COVID, before COVID, before I even took office about this issue. So as county government, it is our responsibility, whether it's defined as a typical government responsibility or not, to address the issue. My position is, and you mentioned at the earlier, at the start of your meeting, that, you know, the fewest complaints are from District One and District Four. My position is if we have complaints in any part of this county, that I, I am just as eager to solve those issues in District Two as I am in District Four. And is my hope that my, my commissioners feel the same way. As we move forward and figuring out a solution, and again, this is a proposal, and I know that a great deal has been put into doing this, so I really appreciate it. What I'd like to see is a code that would touch on each of the four points or five points that you mentioned earlier. I think that would be a, a great start. So with that, you have those four, four points and the dialogue and, and everyone's position that you've heard here today. But I, I think that as we move forward, I, I'm confident that we will come up with a solution that will work for everyone. I don't think that is the desire of the board, nor do I believe this was your intent when you drafted the amendment to penalize, you know, service haulers for one to two bad actors. That's certainly not what we want to do. We're talking about people's livelihoods. We're talking about them caring for their family and providing for their families. So we certainly don't want to, want to interrupt or disrupt that. So, you know, as again, you know, as we move forward, I'm confident that we will come up with a proposal that, that will satisfy the, the general public, the constituents. If you have a, a hauler that you like and you want to keep, you should be able to do that. So the focus then becomes, which, you know, I've heard on the board already, is to focus in on addressing those, the issues without penalizing others in the industry. And that's all I have to add.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify on top of that, I'm looking at ACCG's handbook, and yes, it is considered to be a municipal use to provide sanitation, water pollution control projects, sewage treatment facilities, and storm and sanitary sewer and water supply facilities. So that inclusion of sanitation does include that within the scope of services of local government, specifically county government.
Bill, this question is for you. Are we a legal municipality under the Georgia law?
Well, we're local government. We're not necessarily a municipality. I don't know what it exactly is that, that the Chairwoman Cupid is looking at, but if it comes from ACCG, it usually addresses counties, so.
Okay, because I know the ACCG also tries to separate out, you know, what counties can do and what cities can do or municipalities. That's why I'd like that clarification.
Correct.
Yes, Commissioner, I'm reading from ACCG's handbook on the scope of services that can be provided by county government. Thank you. I think that concludes our comments and questions with respect to this code section. We can move on to the next one. Unless you want to complete your presentation, I understand you have additional slides?
I don't suggest it, but that's up to you.
I am good. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Commissioners. DOT has two chapters to present on today. First one is really just a clarification of process. I'll walk through this relatively quickly. This was included in the last package. Some, some minor tweaking to the, the language just for, for clarification, that it is just a codification of what is, is current practice. I have all of the language up on these slides, so it is quite wordy. I, I will just give a, a brief overview and, and answer any questions about this particular chapter. First, it better defines the fee in lieu process. What exactly that is, it's considered sidewalk development fund is the previous definition. Really, it's a fee in lieu of sidewalk construction as part of development. And then looks at removing the reference, reference to the sidewalk master plan. As the SPOS programs have developed, we have developed with it in terms of prioritization of sidewalk projects in coordination with the district commissioners. So it removes reference to the sidewalk master plan in favor of just using the fee in lieu of sidewalk construction funds to go into district-specific funds to be reported on, on a routine basis. And then from that, we work with the district commissioners on building out sidewalks in accordance with the, the county policies on, on sidewalk constructions. Next, again, a process clarification about developer contributions. Currently on sidewalk funds, the, the department has a typical cost per, per linear foot of what a sidewalk construction would be. And we propose that to developers rather than them going through a, a lengthy process to develop an estimate of what that sidewalk would cost. We provide that as an easy reference point, that they're able to use that as a fee in lieu of if, if the developer chooses not to install a sidewalk and does not like the price that, that we put on it, we do leave it to their option to develop that cost estimate on their own to be reviewed by the department for review and, and approval. The next section again is clarification, this is section B under the 106-98.1. That talks about developer contributions that, and, and just clarifies that it, this process, a similar process may be used for other roadway improvements. Those roadway improvements are narrowly defined to what is approved through zoning. So just as a, a recent example, St. Benedict's had some funds that, that the developer was contributing to a system-wide program or project. This allows for those funds to be collected for those specific purposes. And each of those purposes have to be approved through a developer's memorandum of agreement that defines the purpose for which it is to be used for, how long the department is able to hold those funds, whether it's in escrow or direct payment, and then what happens at the end of that term with those funds. And again, just clarifies the management of how those funds are contributed, recorded, and reported on. And, and this next section really gets into that contribution management, just defining, again, of what the process is in terms of how those funds are collected, and that they will typically be placed in an escrow and applied towards specific projects only, and then detailed in the associated developer agreement. Any questions on chapter 1 of six?
Drew, I do. It's on A, the 106-98-1A.
Yes.
If you could just explain this, because I've read it a couple of times and I'm still not clear. It's not part of the underline, but it's, it says along an arterial, major and minor collector roadways onto which their projects do not abut access. That do not abut access. I thought we weren't able to mandate that a developer construct sidewalks unless it was along their property or road frontage. So if that's the case, the do not abut access, how can we have, charge a fee for them to do a sidewalk if they're not, if we, if we're not obligated, or we can't obligate them to do that? I guess the do not abut access was what was throwing me.
No, I, I do see that. If, rather than answer on the spot, if we could review that with the county attorney's office and see if we can't find a way to clarify that. I, I believe the intent is that when, when there's a road that's, when it's a parcel that's on a corner and, and the primary road is intended for sidewalk, but perhaps the, the side road isn't, some clarification on that. But, but we'll, we'll define that a little bit further.
Are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Burrow.
Hey Drew. In that same section, the, when we do a fee in lieu of for sidewalks, it, it goes into a sidewalk fund in that district for other sidewalks that have connectivity. So when a developer contributes to like a decal lane or a signal or another, you know, road or whatever in their development, is, is that to be used only for that road or decal lane? So it's specific?
That is, that is correct. And I appreciate the opportunity to address that distinction. The, the fee in lieu of go to the sidewalk funds for that district. So it may not go to building a sidewalk on the frontage that they're on, but rather those funds are collected and, and may be used on another project of high priority within the district to increase sidewalk and pedestrian connectivity. Whereas the developer contribution for any other project is only for the specific purpose defined in, in the zoning action, where it will say the developer to contribute $100,000, $200,000 for the construction of a turn lane. And the reason why, why we may get involved in projects like that typically is that, that that project may require acquisition of right-of-way that the county has certain authorities and, and rights to be able to do for public purposes that a developer may not. And so this is a mechanism whereby they can pay into a very specific purpose. It's not generic intersection improvements throughout the whole district, but a very specific project that the county can then take lead and deliver.
Right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, Drew.
Thank you. The other chapter that DOT will present on is 110, specific to private streets. This is largely new language, and there are really two parts. It's new private streets and old private streets. And before I get in too deep into either of those sections or both of those sections, just wanted to find a little bit further about the problem that this proposed language is trying to solve. So relative to new streets, the, the goal of this language is to make sure that private subdivision streets are built to the same quality and standards as any other public street throughout the county, to make sure that they are sustainable for the long term, that it's not something that the developer builds, turns over to the private property owners, and then becomes a maintenance problem in five, 10, 15 years. Related to that, making sure that there is a mechanism to make sure that that maintenance, even if that road is designed to public standards, in 20 years will need to be resurfaced, that those funds are available for that, for that purpose. Because it is a private road, it is not something that the county is able to step in and do. And, and so needing to make sure that, that make- that mechanism isn't in place. A lot of very defined language throughout here, so I will again try to walk through these very quickly. Number five there, under subdivisions and private streets, just states that stormwater management is a responsibility of the private property owner. Number six is that emergency vehicle access must be maintained on these private streets. Number seven establishes that an association must be developed in order to maintain and manage their private assets throughout the, throughout the area. Number eight requires the submission of covenants and bylaws. Number nine establishes a maintenance fund, both initially and in perpetuity, as well as number 10, providing for a maintenance bond at the end of the initial 12-month period. Number 11 allows for the assessment authority of that property owners' association. Number 12 discusses the initial inspection. 13, the initial corrections, if there are any issues that are found in that inspection. And then 14 is, allows the community development director the authority to deny COs if any issues arise during that timeframe. So that's relative to new private streets. The next code section, Section B, discusses hazardous private streets. The problem that this section is attempting to address is those areas that are private streets that are public safety hazards, and we could probably name a few that have come up over the years that are on private streets that, to date, the department does not have the authority to go in and address those private streets, because it would ultimately end up being a gratuity where the county is coming in, performing a service, maintenance service, on private property. What this section allows is for a process to determine that a hazard exists, that that hazard is a public safety risk, and require the property owner to mitigate and resolve those issues. And if they choose not to do so, that the county would be able to come in, perform that maintenance, and lean the property, not just for the cost, but also for the administrative burden that that creates by not resolving that. So as we walk through this, the first section, number one there, defines what a hazardous private street is, and tries to be very specific about what does qualify in that. Number two defines that it must be a public safety risk. And then number three is the issuance of a correction mandate, where the department defines exactly what's wrong, what needs to be done to fix it, where this is, what the defects are, the statement of work, very specifically the schedule to which those, that work must be done. Includes a threat of a lien to the property should the property owner not resolve it, as well as creates an appeal process whereby the property owner can come and petition the board that this is indeed not a public safety hazard, and the board would have the ultimate approval on that. Moving on, number four provides the department the authority to close a road if it is a public safety risk. Number five establishes that appeal process. Number six discusses the failure to repair and what happens from that, which goes into number seven, which is that DOT performs that work and then liens the property. And then number eight is just general statement about the compliance responsibility to comply with the work that is going on through there. So with that, more lengthy section, but any questions on this particular chapter?
Commissioner Burrow?
Just a comment. This brings private roads up to county standards now?
This requires that new private roads are built according to county standards. It would not bring up existing private roads to-
Right, right. I didn't mean that.
Can you clarify what county standards are?
The, it would be a lengthy list, but it's the engineering requirements of exactly how public roads are built, in terms of the subgrade, the GAB, the pavement section, the width, just the overall structure and makeup of the county roads.
Okay.
Yeah. Right now, we have, you know, proposed new subdivisions that ask for private roads, because they don't have to be up to county standards, but they're private and the homeowners have to maintain them, to resurface them or whatever, and not the county. But this would make them all wider and so that, you know, trucks can get through emergency vehicles and stuff. So, thanks. That's a good thing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garmbrill?
And then Drew, I know I shared this with Jessica. My only concern, and this is also for the board, in here on going back to your first section, number seven. So it'd be 110-86. In here, it says property owners' association, and I know when we have stipulation letters, we always approve it as homeowners' association. So if we can address that somehow in the code, because I don't want an attorney to come back and say, "Well, you approved an HOA, we chose to do a POA, therefore, it's not applicable." So if we can address that, just to make sure we don't get caught up in that.
And we'll review with county attorney's office. There's, not all private roads are in residential areas, so we'll have to define the difference between a homeowners' association in, say, a subdivision, and some type of a POA that's in perhaps an office park that has private roads going through it.
Okay. I just know some subdivisions are switching over to the POA from the HOA, so-
We'll look at that. Thank you.
That's why I was looking at that thing. And then on number nine. Who is going to track if the money is there and if it is removed? I mean, is that something the county is going to watch, or who is going to be responsible for monitoring that?
On a, on the annual basis?
Yeah.
We'll follow that.
Okay. And then on number 10, kind of following up, if it's, if no, then what? What will happen? Because the way this is written, if the answer is no, there is no, then what happens?
If the answer is no to whether or not they have established the necessary maintenance funds-
Right, then what?
So there is the ability to withhold COs, but the question may be, what if COs have already been issued over that 12-month period?
And then on number 11. Did I give you enough time to write?
Yes.
Okay. And then on number 11, again, is who's going to review to ensure that the 15% of all fees are paid?
We'll follow up on that as well. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Commissioner Sheffield?
Hey Drew, I just wanted to touch on the hammerheads, and perhaps this is also a question for Jessica, but we receive a fair amount of zoning applications that have hammerhead streets, and it's typically a concern for DOT, for safety vehicles, fire trucks, ambulance, et cetera. But for one, can you confirm that the hammerhead streets are also built to county codes?
Yes.
They are, okay.
They are. Well, they should be.
They should be. And I'm just wondering if we should explore not having or restricting hammerhead streets, but I don't want it to be restrictive to the point where it'll have an adverse impact on the developer. Because usually, when we have applications with DOT's feedback during the zoning process, it's typically a fair amount of conversation around that and changing the hammerhead to regular streets.
I'll discuss with staff and follow back up. It is a common point of conversation, and in fact, a common reason why streets go private is to avoid the cul-de-sac requirements. And we'll take a look at that and see how that relates to this particular code.
Right.
Does the board have a preference on disallowing them?
Well, I don't know. This is just the first that I'm mentioning this, but in light of the conversation earlier with waste man, well, with solid waste and the vehicles not being able to turn around in the cul-de-sac, and some of the challenges even with the fire trucks, et cetera, so I was just wondering if that's something that maybe we can even discuss as a board.
I think, Commissioner, that's a great point, and is separate from what we're doing here, but I think that's a great thing for us to add to our list as we're looking at the UDC. That's a perfect opportunity-
Okay.
-to take a look at some of those design standards, too. So thank you for bringing that up, and we'll be sure to add that to our list to take a look at as we move forward with that project.
Okay, thanks.
Drew, I have some questions for you. Is it possible for a road to be built by county standards and then not be built to a standard where that road cannot be turned over to the county?
Yes. The, it depends on which standard we talk. So it's possible for a road to be built to county standards in terms of the pavement structure, but not meet all the requirements in terms of geometry. An example of that would be, we don't allow perpendicular parking on the roadways because of those turning movements and the risk to traffic. That really turns it into more of a parking lot than it does a road. So physically, it meets county standards, but geometrically, it does not. But if that's a question, we can look and see how that's defined and how that plays out with this particular code.
Yes. I just know that in zonings, cases that I've led, I have typically asked for roads to be built to county standards, because I've dealt with older communities that have had HOAs go defunct or be less able to operate in a way that can maintain the roadway. And so I started to apply a condition in my zonings that even if it's a private road, that it had to be built to county standards with the expectation that that community would have the flexibility to turn that road over to the county, should they no longer desire to have it be a private road. And so I don't know if it can be made crystal clear in how you're differentiating these roads, what the different standards are. Because right now, the way that it's written, I'm presuming that, as you shared, I'm presuming both materially and dimensionally, and now I'm learning even from reading the code, not just with respect to the road, but also the requirements of stormwater, would enable this road to turn over to the county.
I see. So you're, to put it, make sure I understand, your desire is that whatever is built, is built in such a way that should a time come when they're no longer able to maintain it, that that would be able to be turned over to public?
And maybe that needs to be made clear through zoning.
Okay.
Somehow, I'm looking for clarification, because I can tell you, even reading this code here, and after having a subsequent conversation with you, I never perceived that when we were telling an HOA that you need to save up funds to resurface this road or to take care of the road, I have never signaled that they need to have adequate funding to take care of all the stormwater infrastructure, too, which is another significant expense that, me being an HOA president, I don't think I was, you know, in times past, I wasn't aware of that stormwater-
Right.
-maintenance requirement. So if there's some type of notice or some type of way to just make it clear-
And I'm going to add to this. This has been a collaborative effort between our agencies, and it was something that was recommended, sponsored by Commissioner Sheffield along with Commissioner Burrow, so we appreciate the recommendation here. The way the code is written right now, and you'll see in number 12, it says to ensure compliance with all county standards and all applicable provisions of the code, including, you know, goes on so forth. But further up, it also references the development standards, all sections of the code. But I think the point about stormwater is also very important, because it's clear here with regard to the roads, that everything has to be built to all of our standards. But we can also work with the stormwater department to make sure that if there's anything specific we need to add with regard to stormwater, that we're including that, and what do we need to incorporate, so that it is clear to the property owners' associations, the homeowners' associations, that all of that infrastructure needs to be maintained by the POA or HOA if it is a privately-owned street.
So are you telling me, then, when you say all standards, that I would expect, then, for the private streets to meet all requirements and standards of the county?
They will now, but they don't-
Now, okay. That's what I'm trying to get. I thought I'm hearing something different from Drew.
This is number four on here, Drew.
Commissioner, sometimes private roads are not built to those standards. Now, because, like, to the extent that, Drew touched on this, the geometry of them, oftentimes, they are made not as wide, and sometimes because developers will come in and ask for more homes, the way they use the space, the property. So they're not used geometry-wise to that standard.
To that point, I'm curious to know, if this becomes effective, are we going to now presume both geometrically, materially, and every other facet of road development is going to be met through that private, when private roads are built in the future?
The way this is written, and it's specific, Jessica pointed out, number four there, so if I could take the liberty to read. Private streets must comply with requirements for public streets found within this chapter and all other applicable sections of this code and the county development standards. Private streets must be surfaced with the same type of materials that are used by the Cobb County Department of Transportation for the surfacing and resurfacing of public streets, or with materials that are as protective as those, and it goes on and on to basically say it must be at least the same. So we can define this further and clarify it further.
Okay.
The intention of the way this is written is that, because ultimately, what this does is it sets up, once these streets are built, that they're able to be maintained in the long term. That's the purpose of them, providing the 50% of the maintenance funds, and then certifying that those sufficient funds exist in perpetuity, because it is very difficult for a private street to come back and then bring, bring any maintenance deficiencies or any other design issues up to what we consider public standard. And I know we need to define public standard a little bit further. So the goal of this is that any private, new private street would remain a private street in perpetuity? Not that it has to stay that way, but that's the way this is written. And then the purpose of those, that language about the structure, is such that it can remain private in perpetuity, that there isn't something that develops over time, five, 10, 15 years, that becomes such a burden for a 10-home subdivision to be able to take care of-
That's my concern.
-that it's beyond reasonable expectations that they can. So this gets at resolving that while allowing it to stay in private hands for the long haul. That's the intent of the way it's written. But again, we're glad to take any comments and-
I really, I mean, I appreciate the code, and thank you Commissioners Burrow and Sheffield for putting this forward, because at least this gives us a means within our code to address these issues, which brings up another question. Is this retroactive, or is this for new private roads moving forward?
Different answer for different parts of the code. So this first, 110-86A, is for new private streets. That any new subdivision that comes in, either for an LDP or for a zoning action, would have to comply with 110-86A. The B section, the hazardous private streets, would apply to any existing private streets that exist today or in the future that become a public safety risk.
Okay. So then, I just have a practical concern, and forgive me for bringing up this very specific example, but I'm presuming it's not the only specific example of where we have older communities, again, one that may not have an HOA. Sometimes they're older, but they also are less resourced. And they have the responsibility of this private road. They're not maintaining it, because a lot of times, they don't have the resources to maintain it. So now the county can go in and fix it, put a lien on, if the HOA is defunct, who can we fix it?
What this allows is for, first step is, hey, private property owner, you own a road. It's a risk. It needs to be fixed. Should it be the case where they do not have the means, one way or another, to repair that, this provides a process whereby we can go in and repair that, the county can with our forces. And the county attorney's office can speak to this with more authority, but the purpose of the lien part of that, after we come in, deem it's a public safety hazard, and fix it, is to avoid a situation where we provide an improper gratuity, where we've performed surface-
I received that.
...service on private. So then that lien would remain with the property. Should that property ever sell, then that lien would take effect.
But it allows us to be able to fix the public safety issue-
Okay.
And then move on to the next stuff.
And I like that, but then there was a question about withholding a CO. So, then in that instance, again, who's, in the instance where the HOA is defunct, who does the lien go towards? And then if an individual property owner needs to make a repair or do something to their, I guess a CO wouldn't impact the habitability moving forward. Okay.
The, the, the CO portion is for the new roads.
Yep, yep. I'm good.
That's right.
But who does the lien go against? If the HOA is not operating?
It, it would be whoever owns the road.
So, it'll be everybody in the community?
Record title holder.
Record title holder.
So, if, okay. So, I had an issue where an HOA went defunct. The person who was the last president of the HOA moved out of the community. And then there was an issue in the community and we went after that homeowner who had moved away. Is that the record title holder?
Sounds like you have a very specific case in mind. We'd be glad to look at that particular.
These are cases. I'm talking about multi, I'm conflating cases.
I'm sure.
I've had different instances where we've had older communities where the HOA, I think, in Georgia, under Georgia law, is established for 15 years and you have to renew your covenants. So, when the community doesn't come together, and this is notorious for communities that turn over from single-family homeownership to now you have private people coming and renting out homes. You can't get to the property owner to renew those covenants. And then if we are tying something legally to something that may be defunct, who has ownership of addressing these issues? Who has responsibility for addressing them? Because I can assure you, there are a number of communities.
Good, good question.
Well, we'd have to look at that and that'd be part, part of the practicality of the implementation of this. We're trying to give us an avenue by which we can be able to recoup ourselves so we would not be able to not do the repair regarding the gratuities.
Okay.
Each one would be a little bit, a little bit different. Sometimes, the property owners own up to the middle of the road. And, and, and so, it wouldn't necessarily be the entire HOA to be part of that.
Okay.
There have been some, I know in some, some divisions, the property owners own it to the middle of the lake, different things like that. We'll still have to look into each, each one, what it would be.
We may not resolve it here. I'm just sharing with you just my concerns. I'm hoping this works because I think it will be very helpful to have a means to address these issues. Yes, Commissioner?
I, I have a follow-up question regarding the lien and it may be a legal issue, Bill or Debbie. But during the right of redemption period, and let's say the owner comes back, I don't see this happening, but they come back to, to receive the land. Is the county reimbursed for any repairs that are made during the property?
The right of redemption period. What, I'm, I'm sorry.
Like, if, if the property has a lien placed on it, and in Georgia, and I don't know if this relates to streets or commercial, there is a period in which the property owner can, can file to get back, to take back the land.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I mean, they, they could obviously pay off the lien. We do that regularly, say, in weeds right now, or weed control, where the people, where community development has to go out and actually mow the people's yards. And we take a lien against that property to pay for that service that we provided to cut, to cut down the lien. Usually, it comes when the property is sold or when it's being marketed. Then at that point in time at a closing table, that checks that cut to Cobb County to recoup for whatever that cost is related to it. I would imagine this one would look somewhat similar to that.
Okay. So, we would have to sell the street to someone?
No, it's when, it's, the lien is on the person's personal property.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm following you now. Okay.
Oh, I mean, on the real estate property.
Right, okay. Thanks.
And Commissioners, as, as Debbie and I shared with Commissioner Gamble the other day, whenever we talked about this and y'all brought up a great, a lot of great questions. You know, there are still some things that we're working through, Drew and Debbie and I, on these little, these legal type issues. So, we'll continue to flesh those out and hopefully bring some clarification to all those as we move this forward. One thing I did want to point out is number six under hazardous streets does say that failure to repair the street may cause the private street to be repaired by any means deemed advisable by the Board of Commissioners. It says may cause. I don't think there's anything here in the code that would obligate the county to go in and repair a street.
Okay.
And that's something that we can also take a look at. So, all these are great points.
I received that.
So, I really appreciate the feedback. We'll continue to, to work through those.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Drew. Commissioners, I'm going to ask that we have a five-minute break. I think we're almost done. Nature.
Our work session where we are walking through our 2022 code amendments, and we are now on chapter 134, and I'll be turning things back over to Jessica Kuklin, our Director of Community Development.
All right, thank you, Chair. Great news, we only have 45 more pages of code to get. The good news is most of it's use charts, so we won't have to talk about that, so it should move pretty quickly from here. The first thing that we have is in chapter 134-1 in the section, this is the definition section, this is a great recommendation that came forward from the community and was co-sponsored by Commissioner Sheffield and Commissioner Burrell to add a definition for bulk landscape material business. Currently, farm and garden supply store in the definition includes where you can go and make bulk purchases of landscape materials, rocks, sand, pine straw, whatever it is, where you just back your pickup truck in and they load it up, as well as like your pipe nurseries where you go buy your bag of mulch or your Home Depot. So, the recommendation here and what we're putting forward is to add a definition of bulk landscape material business versus the farm and garden supply store. So, we've added that definition and also clarified that a farm and garden supply store does not include sales of bulk landscape materials. That bulk sale of landscape material is more appropriate in our industrial districts versus at your neighborhood shopping center. So, that's the recommendation here, and that's what we're putting forward. There's also an accompanying amendment to 134-192, which is that lengthy use chart that you see, to add bulk sale of landscape materials as a use, and then to specify that it's permitted in the LI and HI districts.
Just a point of clarification, Jessica. When Home Depot has those big trucks of pine straws, that not considered bulk?
No, that would be a little bit different because it's, you know, they're baled, they're bales of pine straw versus just a, I said pine straw, but really, I mean, any other materials where it's just loose. So, those are packaged in that they're baled.
Thank you for clarifying.
And then the other accompanying amendment that would go with this is 134-230, as well as 134-231, which would add bulk sale of landscape materials business as a permitted use in the LI and HI districts respectively. The next change in our definition section is to add a definition for heavy automotive repair establishment. Interestingly enough, heavy automotive repair establishment is already defined in the code in the GC and HI district regulations. However, it's not in the definitions section, so we've mirrored the language that's in the GC and HI district regulations in the definitions section. We do have a light automotive repair definition, but not heavy automotive repair, so we've mirrored that language, but we've also added in here that for heavy automotive repair, no more than three vehicles per storage bay should be stored outside overnight, that no outside storage except in dumpsters or other appropriate containers until the rear, the rear of the principal structure would be permitted, and also no outdoor dismantling of engine, transmission, or bodies. So, just for perspective, whenever we talk about heavy automotive repair, that's where we were talking about your engine and transmission repair versus your oil changes, or we're talking about body repair versus just, you know, your little tune-ups. That would be more in line with the light automotive repair. And then we've added into the light automotive repair, which is already defined in the definitions section, also the same limitation on three vehicles per storage bay to be stored outside overnight, as well as a no outside storage. Of course, the dismantling of engines, transmission, and body does not occur at light automotive repair establishments anyway, so we did not include that here. Any questions, comments, concerns on that?
So, you're saying in HI districts, they're not to be dismantling the engine, transmission, or body outdoors?
That's correct.
That's all, we're supposed to have an indoors?
That would be indoors, yes, ma'am.
All right, that's good to know.
So, moving right along, this is a little bit more lengthy, I'm just going to hit the highlights. This is one put forward by DOT, and this actually came forth earlier this year, there was a lot of good discussion about it, we had a lot of good public comment, but this pertains to the traffic studies for rezonings. As you all know, currently, the way the code reads, if there was a rezoning request that would result in more than 75 residential dwelling units or 50,000 square feet of non-residential building space, that would trigger the need for a traffic study. This, rather than putting the emphasis on the size, puts the emphasis on the number of trips that would be expected. So, there was a lot of conversation earlier this year about trips versus trip-ins. I think that we've satisfied that here, DOT has satisfied it, to clarify that if it's more than 750 additional vehicle trips per day, or 75 trips per hour, that's when a traffic study would be required. That traffic study would need to be submitted in accordance with how, you know, whatever the DOT director is asking them to review, they would need to meet that requirement. And also, they would have to submit that traffic study with no later than 30 days prior to the planning commission meeting, otherwise the zoning manager would have the authorization to continue that case because, you know, staff needs to have adequate time, as well as the public and commissioners, to review the traffic study before having to take that to the public hearing. On the next page, it's more, it goes a little bit deeper, so for applications that would generate more than 3,000 vehicle trips a day, or 250 trips per hour, that would require a little bit higher level of a traffic study than one that would create less additional trips. And again, that would need to be done in accordance with whatever the prescribed methodology of the Department of Transportation would be. Any questions on that before we move forward?
Yes, on B? On B, Drew, are these vehicle trips just to the property that is in question, or the whole block?
Vehicle trips generated by the development.
Okay.
Both to and from.
And then C, someone has brought it to my attention, is 3,000 vehicle trips excessive, or should it be 1,500? Or can you explain why we came to that?
The difference between B and C, well, let me back up, for the purpose for changing this is right now, it's, the threshold is either residential dwelling units number, or it's gross square footage of non-residential. And square footage is not a good indicator of how, how much demand a particular development will place on the roadway network. An example of that would be a storage facility, very few trips, but very large. And so by defining it to trips specifically, then we're able to look at what the true impact is on the transportation network. The difference between B and C is, one, the threshold, so we have, initially, it's 750 vehicle trips during a day, or 75 during the single hour, and then C is 3,000 trips during a single day, or 250 in a single hour, in terms of thresholds, in terms of requirements. B is a general study based on build conditions, so once that is occupied, what is the impact to the roadway network? And then C is not just day one, but also 10 years out, and because that is looking 10 years, we did set a higher threshold for that, because that does add costs to the developer with their traffic study to then be able to project. They have to, it's not double the cost, but it is an increase in cost, because they have to redo all of the study for that tenure. They project out what the growth is, and then what that tenure impact is, and look at that as well. So, that's why the higher threshold is, is just because of that impact to the developer and the cost of doing the study, the time it takes to do the study. It's within the board's purview to set that threshold at an alternative level, though.
Okay, so then, the 3,000 trips encompasses future planning?
That's right. That 3,000 trips a day, or 250 in a single hour, triggers looking at 10 years later. Both require looking at conditions day one that the development is occupied.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Okay, thanks, Drew. All right, okay, so 134-162, we are deleting in its entirety, and this section outlines every single zoning district and basically provides like a little definition of the zoning district. The issue that we have is that we also have that at the beginning of each zoning district's district regulations, there's a purpose and intent. So, essentially, we have this in two places, and this is where we end up with where maybe we change something in one place and we don't go back and change it in the other, so it's inconsistent, it's duplicative, and sometimes inconsistent if we don't make that change. A great example is with regard to the RA6 districts, and I saw the email from the East Cobb Civic Association regarding the chart, that's another place we had it, that frankly, we overlooked it in this code amendment package, we can clean that up down the road, that's just a little administrative thing, but these are, these also are some of the issues as we move forward with the UDC, we're hoping to clear up some of these. This is another great example of where we have information that's duplicate in our codes, and then if we make one change, we have to go change multiple sections.
I understand that, and I'm not asking for to have this in the code, but when I started having district zoning meetings, I would pull this section out, because a lot of times people didn't know what the codes were and what they meant. So, this was like a great handout for people to just have some familiarity with what the individual descriptions are of the code section. Short of having it here, is there another way you perceive that we can have some type of handout, or some quick reference without causing complications in the code?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think it would be great to have a handout that's sort of a, almost a little zoning primer on just generally what each zoning district is, and just sort of a Cliff's Notes version of what the purposes and intent is, outside of the code, but that's something I think we can make available, we could put on our website, share with community groups, and also with Commissioners to share.
Okay, thank you.
The next several sections are the same. So, this was, this was a recommendation that came from Commissioner Burrell regarding our multifamily districts, and as you'll recall, whenever we adopted the Purpose Built Student Housing ordinance, there's a section in there that speaks to a security plan, and it requires that a security plan would be coordinated with law enforcement, this would be for the Purpose Built Student Housing, that would incorporate crime prevention through environmental design, it requires annual review of the plan by the property manager, and then that plan would be provided to the county upon request. So, Commissioner Burrell asked, you know, we've incorporated that into our Purpose Built Student Housing, is that something we could incorporate to all of our multifamily districts? And so that's what we're putting forward, as the request here would be in the RM8 district, RM12, RM16, PVC, RMR, RHR, RRC, and I believe that's it. So, the language in all of those is just pasting that same language regarding the security plan into those. It would only apply to new apartment complexes, or new multifamily developments, it wouldn't apply to existing developments, but it would enable us to ask for that security plan to be put forth for new multifamily developments.
Any questions, comments? I have one.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it's not clear to me, you say that lighting has to be the minimum, is it at least the minimum, or?
Let me go. So, on the lighting piece, I will say it's double underlined, but it's actually the same...
It refers to 134...
Okay.
269, yes.
Okay, so what this says is that it would need to be adequate, the minimum to provide security for residents of multifamily housing development, so the goal here is that we're providing adequate lighting to provide security, but not so much that it's lighting up everything around it.
Okay.
That's the intent here, and as you'll see before, that does not spill over onto budding properties.
You know what, and it's all good, because in the sentence that prefaces it, it says the minimum is listed in 134-269, so.
Yes.
Now, is this just for the multifamily, because I know Commissioner Gamble's been trying to get a lighting code in here, is this the same?
No, they did it somewhere else, and it's great.
It's what?
It's great.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, that's the next thing, is to talk about lighting, and the piece that Commissioner Gamble was concerned with was lighting at gas station pumps and canopies, where we sometimes have LED lights attached to the top of gas station canopies that spill light out onto the roadways and adjacent properties. So, right now, chapter 134-66, that section pertains to setbacks for gas station pumps and canopies, we're changing this to be gas station pumps and canopies, which would still include the setback requirements, but also include in there lighting requirements for those canopies. That lighting for a gas station canopy would need to be recessed into the lower surface of the canopy and fully shielded, so it's providing light to the pumps adequately, but ultimately eliminating glare onto the roadways and adjacent properties. The lighting should not exceed 50-foot candles, so that would all be incorporated onto the site plans when they submit them, and no lights would be mounted on the top or the sides of the canopy, and the canopy would not be lit, so that will keep the light focused where it needs to be, and avoids spilling over to adjacent properties and roadways. And also, Commissioner Gamble, you had a question about the setbacks, so right now, the setbacks, and we're not proposing to change this, the setbacks say that it would be a minimum, canopies and pumps would be a minimum of 15 feet from future right-of-way, and I did confer with Drew, that is adequate. One thing, and he brought up a great question, that I think that we may look at incorporating here, we're talking right now with the Fire Marshal's Office, is it's fine for the canopies, but we also want to be sure that any underground storage tanks are also setback. Right now, this code doesn't speak to that, underground storage tanks for fuel are permitted by the Fire Marshal's Office, so we're looking at, you know, whether or not we may want to also incorporate into this, while we've got this section of the code open, that underground storage tanks for fuel would also be setback, so we may be bringing that forward as we do the revised draft coming forward. Any questions on that one?
Oh, Commissioner? Go ahead. What about existing gas stations?
No, this really does pertain to new gas stations, I would, that's something we'll look at as to how we might be able to utilize this, because I know that we've got some where there are lights that are already put on top of the canopy, and to what extent legally we would be able to require them to make those changes, and to remove some of that lighting. But we'll pursue that.
Even if it's not new, what about if it's a variance application? Can we require it then?
Well, certainly, I mean, people, people can ask for variances from anything, so if there's a variance application, and really, I mean, we say not new, but I mean, if there's a gas station that's existing and this code is adopted, they're not going to be able to go in and mount giant LED lights on top of their canopy after the fact, but as far as with a stipulation or what have you, if there's a variance application that comes forward, is that what you're asking? Yeah, I think that would certainly be on the table. Anything else? Yes, Commissioner?
Who's going to be our police that's owning to make sure all these things are up to code?
Well, and as you know, a lot of times, our code enforcement efforts right now are reactive, you know, we're not out there enforcing codes, riding the streets. Well, we do have our early morning inspections program, but, you know, typically, if we receive a complaint, or, you know, for instance, Commissioner Gamble brought to us some stations that she had concerns about, at that point, that we would be able to move forward with enforcement. I will say also, thank you to the board for approving our four additional code enforcement officers on the fiscal year '23 budget, so I'm hoping that'll also help us to stay on top of some of these things. And then likewise, you know, a lot of this will be caught, the lighting at the plan review stage for our new stations in particular, or is there making changes to their canopies and what have you that require permits?
Just make sure John Peterson knows all these new codes.
I will make sure, and he's already seen all of these, he's very familiar with them, so, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
All right, and this is it, the last one, sign maintenance, and this was another good recommendation that came from the community and came as a Commissioner-sponsored amendment. You know, a couple of years ago, you all adopted the Outdoor Property Maintenance Code that gives us some ability where we've got, you know, roofs that have had a blue tarp on them for months, so we can go in and address those. This would pertain to sign maintenance, and it's kind of similar. It would require that sign structures are protected from the elements, that they're painted as they need to be, you know, free from rust and chip paint and what have you, free from holes, breaks, rotting material, if signs become faded, that they would be repaired or replaced, if letters fall off or are misaligned, that those would be adjusted. The monument base would be maintained, if there's brick or stone or stucco, what have you, monument base, and also that illumination devices would be maintained in working order, so you don't have one just flashing at you or completely not illuminated. And one that Commissioner Sheffield also asked us to add that we'll incorporate is to make sure that those sign panels, like where you have several panels, we don't, if there's an empty tenant spot, that you don't just have a hole, that there's something there, some sort of panel, so you don't just have a hole with the exposed lighting behind it, so we'll incorporate that too. But again, this is very similar to our Outdoor Property Maintenance Code, just pertaining to sign maintenance, to help us make sure those are maintained in good order. Any questions on that?
I don't see any questions.
All right, well, that's it. So, again, next up, the only chapter 134 goes to the Planning Commission, so that'll go to the Planning Commission on September 6th, we'll present chapter 134 to them, and they'll get their first look at it officially next week at their work session, but of course, that's been included in their packet, and then we'll have the first public hearing on September 13th at the morning meeting, and the second public hearing, I have an extra nine in there, sorry about that, on September 27th, and then that will be it for this round of code amendments.
Thank you, thank you for walking us through all of these, and for all of your efforts and staff's efforts to put forward this package. Commissioners, do you have any final comments or questions? Commissioner Gamble?
Jessica, on this slide?
Yes, ma'am.
The public hearing number two, it says seven and the nine.
I know, I was looking for that. It's 7:00 PM, not the backwards P that's a nine, sorry about that, thank you.
Very good. All right, this concludes our work session for today, we have a BOC meeting at 7:00 PM tonight, feel free to tune in or to join us in person, thank you.